...9th, 2019 at 6:15 and then went into executive session to discuss strategy with a Harwich Employee Association issue that was resolved and mainly this was just informational reporting to us the results of that. We're out of executive session at about 6:20 recessed, now we're coming back into order for our meeting. So let me read this statement, "As required by the open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audio tape this meeting must notify the chair prior to the start of the meeting." Anyone so inclined? If not, I ask you to join me in the pleasures of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our next item is what we're really doing is a standing agenda item and ask Chris to give us an update of where they are on construction.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few things tonight that I'll do at the beginning here. So just as a reminder to folks, the Robert Howard Company is doing the work. They have provided us with a three-week look ahead, so the first week, which is this week coming up, is more accurate and then the other weeks may have some adjustment to them. But on this, the mainline sewer crew number one, so they have two crews working in town, will continue with the installation of sewer services on Herndon Road, will continue installation of sewer services on various locations, and commence installation on Johanna's Path. Mainline Sewer Crew Number Two will continue installation on Route 137 for this week and for next week. The Mainline Crew Number One will continue installations on Johanna's Path and Sewer Crew Number Two will do the continuing installation on 137. The work on 137 will facilitate a detour, so people should plan accordingly. I think I'll do those two weeks. And then just two other items, Mr. Chairman. The board has, and it's a public meeting, DHY, the Dennis Harwich Yarmouth Sewer Initiative or Wastewater Initiative, has a meeting at our community center here on Thursday, September 19th at 6:00 PM. So Thursday, the 19th at 6:00. Do we have a head count for, is everyone planning on attending or?
We haven't.
You're just kind of arranging seats and stuff.
Okay.
Okay, so we plan on a full house.
I think we do then.
And we are going to have that televised, so if folks can't make it, it will be.
And you have notified FinCom, Finance Committee?
I believe, actually, I missed their meeting last, I missed their meeting last week.
I've notified, I talked to at least one or two, but maybe send an official notice out.
Okay, we'll send out a notice, thank you. And then just I received from the assessors today, actually, I think through you, Mr. Chairman, that the assessor's office, just due to some staffing issues, will be closed to the public on September 20th. So we apologize for that inconvenience, but the assessor's office, due to staffing commitments, will be closed on September 20th. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else for, anyone for public comment?
No, you can fight.
Well, you can fight over it, but.
Hello to the board. I'm Judith Ford. I'm just here to make an announcement for an amazing concert that we have coming up at the South Harwich Meeting House. We have our first classical concert ever and it's a phenomenal range of concert pianists from New York City and the Cape and all around and just phenomenal players and they're going to be playing on our newly moved in 100-year-old Steinway Grand. So if anyone is interested in classical music, this is a phenomenal concert not to miss. It's this Saturday. We'll have a special reception from 6:30 to 7:30 and from 7:30 on will be our concert with our pianists, but it's a huge opportunity for tremendous classical music in Harwich. So anyone who's interested, please let us know. Tickets are available on southharwichmeetinghouse.com website, where you can buy them through brown paper tickets, or you can get them at the door. Hope to see the town there. Thank you.
It's a great spot for a concert, we know that.
Pardon me?
It's a great spot for.
I was there this afternoon with one of our pianists who was practicing and it is earth-shattering, so come if you can.
You need to be more enthusiastic.
Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. I'm just reminding everyone about the Toucha Truck, which is next Saturday, not to interfere, so you've got plenty of time outside in the community center and it is a community effort, the police, fire, highway, water. Some of our local truckers will be there to help us out and if you can bring a gently-worn costume, if you have one, we're collecting them on that day too. And then just as a point of information, if you don't mind, on your agenda, it's under new business on C. I just wanted to clarify, I in no way approved anything. The only thing I approved is how they submit a request to you, so I didn't want you to think I was overstepping my bounds. Just told them how to do it.
You're fine, Carolyn. I didn't read that into it.
Good evening. Jenny Hewitt from Brooks Free Library. I wasn't able to be here last week when Lee Culver gave his update on the tornado, so I wanted to let you know one other tornado-related event. Last week I presented at a resiliency forum for cultural institutions, which was held at the Mass Emergency Management Facility, their headquarters in Framingham, so we got to actually see the bunker and be 25 feet underground. That was pretty exciting. But anyway, talking about how we responded during and after the tornado and also how we prepared so we can continue to provide services after disaster, I'd heard comments from colleagues about, well, you have a generator, so you're open, like, no big deal, which is true. It was somewhat uneventful for having a tornado, which is good, this is what you want, that's because we've been prepared and all the work went in in the years ahead of time. And so the message, I wanted some of the cultural institutions to know how we got support for the generator by, when we first asked, the response was, well, we don't need another shelter, we have enough buildings that are shelters in town. I said, no, it's not about being a shelter, it's about being a library and all the services a library can provide. And so while we were working on getting funding for that, we also had a couple of opportunities to put into practice where we were open once before a, once after a blizzard and once before a blizzard and then when we had to close three times in a year, three weeks each for the, when our emergency lights failed and we opened that library in the lobby. So that, you know, emergency management planning on what resources do we have available and how can we continue to provide services, that kind of mindset was great. The staff, like, really stepped up, knew, they were calm, they were professional. We've had training about it. So as I was bragging about what happened and how, you know, when we had everyone in the basement and our children's librarian immediately started engaging the kids in activities, you know, so as far as the kids were concerned, it was just another fun day at the library. Someone came up to me from the Mass, from the Museum of Finance after and said, and they have excellent response plans for all kinds of scenarios. She said, I've never considered that, anything where they might have to shelter in place unexpectedly. She was going back to talk to their education department so that they could get, you know, them engaged, engage the kids in activities right away and help keep them calm and everyone get through the event as calmly as possible. So that was really good and there was lots of positive feedback about that, so I just thought I'd tell you that this forum was sponsored by CoStep. It's a coordinated statewide emergency preparedness. It's an initiative that brings together cultural heritage institutions with emergency management and first responders. And so there was a lot of positive recognition for Harwich at that. And a related thing I wanted to mention is that September is Emergency Preparedness Month in Massachusetts and in addition, libraries both statewide and nationally are participating in Climate Preparedness Week, which is kind of an odd-sounding name. Basically, it's for, sponsored by event communities responding to extreme weather. So it's meant, you know, for any kind of weather disaster, whatever you might need to prepare for. So there's two programs we have next week. The first is on Monday, the 23rd at 6:00 PM, we're going to have Emergency Preparedness and Response Program with Barnstable County Emergency Management Coordinator Sean O'Brien and our own Emergency Management Director Lee Culver. So we expect a lot of good advice to be given out there. It's free, there's no registration required. And the second event is a World Cafe, which is a, well, this one's on climate preparedness conversation. So a World Cafe is kind of a model for facilitating small group discussions on issues that are important to a community. So this is going to be our first one and we're going to do it on climate preparedness and preparing for extreme weather. So that one is, that is Thursday, the 26th at 2:00. And that, we hope to use that format in the future, you know, and get it going on other topics that might be of interest. But registration is required because that's just a small group. I'm not sure if it's 12 or maybe 15 people. And then finally, I just wanted to mention, last week I attended the first meeting of Barnstable County's Complete Count Committee for the 2020 census. This is the first time that the primary responding method will be online, so, you know, we've done this for many other things, you know, the ethics test and other things, but library will be involved in that, you know, offering computers and assistance for people that need it. When people are contacted, they'll get an invite in the mail and they can go online and respond there or call in. It will be available in 12 languages. If there's no response to either of those methods, they will send out a questionnaire and if no one responds to the questionnaire, that's when you get an numerator coming to your house. So one of the things I think people don't realize is that the census is confidential for 72 years. Your individual data cannot be released and by law, the workers have a lifetime confidential. I mean, huge fines and prison time if they release anything, but also no data can be shared with any federal agency. So I think that is important, like, for us, I think our effort needs to be before the holidays to try to make people aware of this before the snowbirds leave. So even if someone may claim residency in Florida for tax purposes, but live here nine months of the year, you're supposed to fill it out for where you are, where you live and sleep most of the time. And so I think that's kind of, that no data sharing is kind of a key thing that people may want to know. Your response really is confidential, so more on that to come.
Jenny, the two events you discussed, are those online on your website?
Yes, they are on our website, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rolling back to the after-event assessment for the tornado, as you weren't here, a lot of times people aren't told to their faces, nice stuff. So after that event, between your Facebook page and the Fire Department's Facebook page, you guys were the primary source of information about what was going on and how people could deal with things, so you deserve an awful lot of credit for that.
I think that's an important role. They've heard, initially when they started talking about libraries helping the communities after disaster was ports in a storm, which means that, you know, you're a place for people to come, you know, like what happens, people, even if they have power back, you want to get out and see other people in the community and exchange experiences and things like that. But then there was a phrase being used, libraries as second responders, which at least, you know, lets, you're not trying to, you know, we're not as important as the first responders. But now I've seen a phrase used, more libraries as information first responders, and I think that's really key because that is our role in the community and connecting people to federal or state sources too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Now, announcements? Ed, you want to talk about, or someone about this weekend?
Well, it was a, I think a very.
Cranberry Festival.
A very successful weekend, very well-attended and a nice, very nice fireworks show. We had the largest number of craft vendors that we've had in many years, had 160 and had four bands perform on Saturday and two on Sunday, and I think it was a very, very successful weekend. I'll get more of the actual facts and figures on it over the next week and I think the one thing that we have gotten response for at the entrance to the fairgrounds this year, we put up a little, old pickle barrel and put a sign on it and said, please donate a buck to help the Cranberry Festival Committee with its scholarship program and we had over $2,000 tossed in the barrel and that'll be a scholarship for an additional student. That was really quite.
Yeah, first, I want to thank Ed and the rest of the committee for the Cranberry Festival, but I also want to spread the thanks out to the Chamber of Commerce that put on the parade and the fireworks that dovetails really well with the festival and make it more robust, so thanks to everybody who did something.
Anyway, I'm sure we all agree with that.
Yep.
Anything else? Next on, we'll move to a public hearing and YMCA is here to talk to us about their strategy going to the future, so I'll just turn it directly over to you folks.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Stacy Pugh, I'm the President and CEO at the YMCA Cape Cod and I have a fabulous group of volunteers here with me. Brad Kroll, standing right behind me is the Chair of our Lower Cape Committee, which was established two years ago because of Brad's passion and interest in bringing much-needed YMCA programs and services to the Lower Cape communities and getting beyond Barnstable for easier access for the community. And then also Tony Skjavi is a member of our Board of Directors along with Brad and on our Lower Cape Committee and Caribou Lay is also a member of the Lower Cape Committee and they're with me tonight just to share their passion and interest in our efforts that we've done so far. So we do have a brief PowerPoint presentation and we also handed out a packet with much more detailed information about the Community Needs Assessment that we've completed over the last year and a half. And now we're on the roadshow, getting out there and communicating to the different communities that we think we may be able to have a positive impact on, the results of what we've learned through our process, which by the way, was all volunteer process led by this amazing group of people where the Y, you know, we support them in finding out ways that we can serve the community. So a lot more detail you can find in the packet that we provided. But I first thought I would talk a little bit about what is the YMCA, what do we do? Not everybody has had the experience in their life to know what a Y is and what kinds of programs and services we offer, very often thought of as gym and swim, but we know that there's so much more that we do to serve our local communities. So and every Y is unique. Yes, we are a national organization, but we're federated, which means that every Y is independent and is developed by its local community with a local Board of Directors and local staff, but we have accountability to our larger parent organization. And we are able to develop our own mission statement, so we do have our personalized mission statement up there for you, which really is rooted in bringing values to the programs and services that we offer to the community as we serve children and families and whatever the unique needs are of any individual community. We do have a vision to strengthen the foundation of our community that we serve and we do that through collaborating partnerships as really our best way to serve the community. We have three main areas of focus, youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. Youth development is a core area of focus for the Y and ever since inception, way back in 1844 in London, England, founded upon supporting the needs of youth in the community. We also are, on the Cape are serving four regions. We have Upper Cape, Mid-Cape, Lower Cape, and we haven't really reached too deeply into the Outer Cape yet, although we're getting a few calls as there starts to be a little bit more public knowledge that the Y is expanding our services across the Cape. And so with that, I just want to turn it over to Brad to talk a little bit about the process that we've gone through to understand the needs of the four towns that make up the Lower Cape, Harwich, Orleans, Brewster, and Chatham, and he'll tell you a little bit about what we've done.
Thank you, Stacy. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just a quick note on nomenclature. We include, as far as the Y is concerned, we also include Dennis in the Lower Cape just because it's far enough away from our West Barnstable facility that we don't draw that much from that town. So we have lumped that in, just to make that clear when you see a map like that that shows Dennis as part of the Lower Cape. That's not a mistake, that's intentional. So there was a process that we used. Everything that the Y does involves a process and usually four or five different binders. There's about, there are about 90 steps in going from, we think there might be a market here for us, to actually completing a facility and opening it up. So we're still in the early phases of that. We've been up about, we've been working on this for about two years now. So what we did first was we did something we call a new site analysis and that was to determine where it would make the most sense, given where we are right now and given where other people are that we're not serving, where would it make the most sense to be considering locating a facility? And we looked at three locations, starting with exit, near Exit 9 on the Mid-Cape Highway. All these are on, off the Mid-Cape because we want to be able to serve as many people as possible and that makes the most sense given that mission. We also looked at Exit 10 and Exit 11 and we narrowed in on the location based on a study that was done that suggested that Exit 10 really was where we should be looking. There were a lot of households that were available and accessible to that location, within 20 minutes of that location, and it was far enough away from West Barnstable that we wouldn't be drawing our existing clientele off into this new, into this new facility. So that's kind of where we are focusing right now, somewhere in the area of Exit 10. As we move this process along, continue developing services for the area, but also looking long-term at a location. The next step in our process was a Community Needs Assessment and this was, this started off being an online survey. We needed to recruit 360 people. The folks at the YMCA National Office said, oh, you're going to have a hard time recruiting that many people. I think it took us two weeks to get to 813. So clearly, there is a lot of interest in this project. The community, the community sees this and they say, yeah, we definitely have an opinion on this, this is something we'd like to see, and they came out in droves to answer our online survey. We were very, very gratified by this and this was the first indication that we had that maybe we were on to something here, maybe there really is something that the community wants in our services, our organization, and potentially a facility. From there, we went on to in-person focus groups, which were done at Cape Tech. We had, I think, eight of them representing different demographic groups and we discussed some of the concepts, fleshed out some of the concepts that we had introduced in the online survey and developed a more fine, a more fine sense of where we should be going and what should be, what should be a part of this offering. And then finally, we invited 45, well, we invited more than 45, but we had 45 community leaders attend a meeting where we discussed, we introduced what we'd learned and refined it even more. And this was held at Brewster Baptist Church just under a year ago, I think, last September. And from that, we developed what we think was a very, a very well, well-considered and detailed preliminary community needs assessment for this facility. Here's what we learned. This is a word cloud, you've probably seen these before. The larger words mean that they, these concepts popped up more in our discussions than the others. And clearly, what folks want here is affordable housing, not something that the Y delivers, but is, and not really a surprise either. The affordable part clearly is something that we can help. We can help make this place more affordable, we can help make this place more livable for all demographics, but especially for younger families. And one thing about the Y is that we never turn anyone away for inability to pay. If you can't afford what we're doing, there are ways that the organization can make it affordable, so this was very good to see. Other things that we saw, well, you can read it for yourself, some of the, some of the call-outs, some of the things that we learned specifically, looking at the quotes, "Affordable high-quality childcare and programs for families and younger or middle-aged adults." The senior community is well-covered here, but there aren't a lot of programs for younger and middle-aged adults. Another comment, "Affordable housing and community activity locations at affordable rates that offer a variety of activities for all." And then sort of a classic Y comment, "A nice gym with a pool on the Lower Cape." As I've already indicated, we found an awful lot of enthusiasm. There was a sense of excitement when we introduced this idea to people. People come to us when they learn that we're doing this. I think every member of our committee has at least one anecdote of somebody learning that they're doing this and being very interested and being very excited and potentially offering their help with this. This includes seasonal residents. We've met with seasonal groups and they seem to be interested and on board. One great thing that the Y does is if you're a member of any YMCA in the country, you can use any other YMCA just by presenting the, your membership ID. So that's a great alternative for our seasonal residents and also for folks that vacation here. It's, it makes an awful lot of sense for them as well. So the community is finding us, they're coming to us when they learn what we're doing. So I'm going to turn it back over to Stacy, we're almost done. I know you've got a busy night tonight. I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're doing now and entertain any questions if you have some.
So Brad mentioned, you know, the community is finding us, so hosting the Community Leaders' Forum was one of the first ways where we were really able to engage in dialogue with, you know, what do community leaders think the needs are and then comparing that with what we heard through the surveys and the focus groups. And that also opened the door for how can we start to provide programs and services with a Y without walls, which by the way, is how the Barnstable YMCA started in 1966 until 1989. It was programs and services brought to the community through partnerships and collaborations with many, many, many organizations. And so we don't want to have to say, oh, you have to wait, you know, however long it takes to raise money to build a major facility and find land and go through all of these processes that will take a lot of due diligence and a lot of effort and a lot of community building to happen. So we want to be able to serve programs and services as much as we can before all of those steps take place. So childcare, it's, you know, front-page news these days and the need for affordable childcare. And, you know, we already started several years ago, about five years ago, with NOS at Public Schools, working in partnership with the school district, renting empty classroom space for early childhood programs. So as you see that shrinking school population, it's leaving holes in classrooms and there's this huge need for early education, full-day, high-quality, affordable infant toddler preschool care for families who are working and need a safe place that they can trust for their child to be enrolled in all day long, all year round, not just during the school year for those young families with young children. So we've been filling that gap. We started out with Stony Brook Elementary School. We then expanded to Cape Cod Regional Technical High School. We're renting two classrooms in the old building, but are going to be relocating to the Gilmore House when the wrecking ball goes through the old building in June of next year. And then as a result of our Community Leaders' Forum, Scott Carpenter from Montomoy Regional School District said, you know, how can we get an early education program in Harwich Elementary School and in Chatham Elementary School? And so we have been working with Scott and the school district on ways that we can provide programs and services in partnership within the school building. And we will be opening two more classrooms at Harwich Elementary School on October 1st of this year. And there's more that the school district wants us to do to help serve youth and we're finding ways that we can do that, not by competing with others in the community, but complementing and finding where the need is greatest and where we can help. So we really have, you know, every Lower Cape school district is now involved with the Y and we're trying to find more and more ways to serve the needs of the community in partnership with the school. Dennis Yarmouth is a school district that we just recently started working with as well in providing our Achievers Program, which is a teen program for teens to set well, in providing our Achievers Program, which is a teen program for teens to set goals to pursue higher education beyond high school, and be the first in their family to go to college. And we provide mentors and support for those teenagers to be able to do that. And hugely, hugely important in breaking the cycle of poverty, to pursue higher education beyond high school. So what are we up to next? This amazing group of people that are here with me tonight, along with several others on our committee, are active in fundraising. Not to build a building yet, but to really do some professional studies, to give us the assurances that our volunteer-led studies do have validity to them. So we need to do a market analysis. This study costs about $20,000, really take a look at testing prices, completing phone calls with residents of all four towns, to really understand from a professional study standpoint, what is it that people want, and what are they willing to pay for it? And where are the potential needs for fundraising to support what people cannot afford to do? So that market study will come first, and then we will move on to figuring out a capital campaign. So if you find out that there's a thumbs up from a market feasibility study, how many potential people would be interested in utilizing a YMCA facility? Now you want to know, how big does it need to be? And then, how much money is it going to cost you to raise to build it? Because this is something that requires 100% fundraising effort to get behind. So we would do a professional fundraising feasibility study, and we would test the community for the capacity to raise money for a YMCA. People always want to know, about how much do you think it'll be? We'll give it a range of about $13 to $15 million for a YMCA facility. And we want to be able to test that. So that is what we're working on right now. This is our full group of committee members that are up here, folks that all are residents of, and business people in the Lower Cape community, and certainly very excited to help and very committed to doing what it takes to, to bring this project to the next step. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Stacy and Brad, for opening it up. Don, you look like you're ready to ask.
Yeah, I'm going to start with a really hard question, and I think you can infer where I'm coming from. What can we do to help you?
Yes. Well, I always say, you know, spreading, spreading the word that this is a project that is of interest in the town, and opening doors for us of people that you think we should be talking to. I think that is critical in our steps right now of who can help us with our fundraising efforts. If you've done capital projects, then you know what it takes to bring a capital project of this size to a community. So there is pretty much, there's nothing that you could do that wouldn't help. Everything that you would do could help in, in some way, shape, or form.
Great idea.
Anyone else have a, Ed?
Yeah. Should now, meeting with your group as I can. Unfortunately, you always have your meetings Monday afternoon, right before this meeting, so it's hard to make it sometimes, but I will continue to do that, and connect you up with people in the community that I think are important for you to run into.
Excellent. Thank you, Ed.
Michael?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Just echoing Don and Ed, wherever we can help.
Yeah, I think we're all willing to help. Post a membership down Barnstable, if that's your location.
The monthly?
The number of members.
Oh, number of members. We serve about 10,000 people annually, and that translates to about 5,000 households.
Yeah, significant.
Yes, significant.
Yeah, I just want to make one point. I mean, to the extent that the Housing Trust gets more successful at what it's trying to do, it's going to be a real need for something like this, because this, this would become the hub that you could design a whole lot of different services around.
Yeah, you know, one of the things I love, when I look at the Barnstable Y from an aerial view, and what surrounds it, you know, we have the Community College right across the street from us. We have, you know, churches as our neighbors. We have a 40B development behind us. So you have this wonderful campus feel of community that has multiple services, that really drives a lot of traffic, you know, into that general area where people are already going. And so it provides a lot of convenience.
In, to, to that extent, just recognize, I'm sure you have, but even if we're not successful, you've got a real large constellation of people who could walk to this from headwaters, or Exit 10 is an excellent place for this.
Yeah, probably a reason the researchers said, "Look there," huh?
Okay. Stacy, coming in. Ed?
Don, to your point, one, one thing that probably shouldn't be overlooked in all this is the fact that you have an excellent facility not too far from there already. And I think you get a flavor for what we're trying to do here. There is some crossover, but a lot of it's quite different. And it is not our intention to try to reinvent the wheel here, just to make that clear for the board and, and members of the community. We don't want to try to be a second community center. We intend to complement rather than substitute for.
Yeah, I think there's a great model of that in Barnstable, where the Hyannis Youth and Community Center, we're great partners with each other, you know, where they're not providing services that their facilities have, you know, we really complement each other very nicely, and we partner in serving youth.
Okay. Ed?
While we were talking, I was looking through your handout, and it gives, the population for Dennis is 2,500 people? Is that true?
No, it can't be right.
The total, your own population?
Yeah.
It's roughly the same as ours, couple, around 500.
Okay. Now, Michael, are there?
Page three?
You're on.
They're 14. Like you said. Hundreds more, they're not 2,500.
These are households. Is that households?
Well, there's a household.
Oh, yeah, estimated total 2017 population. Yeah, that's not right.
Yeah.
You know what? I bet they scooped up one zip code.
It's about 14,000.
And there are multiples.
It's about 14,000.
Yeah. You know, this was a challenge with our national organization. They couldn't understand that one town would have many zip codes. So that's a little, a little oops there, yeah. We have to pull the rest of those zip codes in. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for picking up on that, Ed.
Michael?
Has anyone from your, from the study group or the organization reached out to town staff, administration, Chamber of Commerce?
Great question. Actually, recently, I met with Peter from Brewster, and he was, you know, talking about similar, you know, we're going to the town of Brewster to do a presentation. Before you do that, let's talk to town staff and find out what the needs are. So, yeah, we're really looking at ways that we can make connections with people, so that we can have really clear understandings of who's doing what, and what the different plans are that are already on people's dockets. It's very, very important for us to understand that. And then we have, the Chamber executives are meeting, I think they meet once a month, but Kara has been arranging for us to have time to be in front of the Chamber executives, pick their brains, try to understand what their needs are as well. So this, the, the needs assessment is constant and ongoing, and as things evolve over time, we will continue to work with local folks on understanding what the needs are and how things are changing.
Okay. Follow up my point.
Just, fair to say that you'll be doing that soon?
Yeah, yes. I, you know, we had an unexpected newspaper article come out on this project a couple weeks ago. That was not part of the plan. And I think that made, it made people believe that they, we were more organized at this point than we really are. We recognize that we have a lot of conversations to have. There's absolutely nothing written in stone right now, and we are looking forward to those conversations. And just recognize that in a volunteer-led organization, which this primarily is, we don't always get the order right. And apologies if there's been any concerns as a result of that.
No apologies.
Chris?
I know you're in very preliminary stages, but certainly you have an open invitation. I know when Outer Cape Healthcare came in, I think my first week or two on the job, they invited me, and then they had a fundraising and took a long time to set up that going. But, you know, any, anything you need, please feel free to, to give me a general.
Excellent, thank you. We'd love, we'd love to sit down and talk more deeply.
Okay. Ed?
And I know through the process, I've provided you with the appropriate staff and their contact information, so.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And I know you've been in touch with some of them, so.
Yeah, one person at a time, one group at a time, right?
Yep, yep.
How a movement is built.
Well, thanks again. It's obvious we're, we're all here to help.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, the first agenda item is the goals for this year for the Board of Selectmen. I circulated these, and you've had for a couple weeks. I know, Don, you sent me some comments, which I think I've been pretty much incorporated. Don?
I really appreciate you did try to incorporate them, but I do have one slot relative to the third one that got kind of co-opted into, I guess it's objective B. What I was really aiming at, as it currently stands with the combined words, include non-community preservation committee articles requiring funding, oh, no, objective A, including printed warrant explanations and verbal assurances. We have, in the past, been given a really low bar from our legal counsel. And the bar is, it doesn't matter what we promised, it doesn't matter what else is printed in the warrant or on explanation sheets, it only matters what the text of the warrant is. And I was trying to come up with some clear language that's, which is what I originally had, that when, when you go to town meeting, mindset, adhere to the intent of town meeting votes by being bound not merely to the printed text of the article, but also to what was promised in either printed warrant explanations or verbal assurances made during the debate. I just wanted to make it clear, because in the past, we have made, we have had discussions here where it says, "Counsel says that we only have to do this."
Ed, and, thank you for that, Don. I, I disagreed with the, the intent being added to that, because I've seen in the past where we've disagreed on intent. And as, you know, coming out from the same town meeting where we've read, the example actually was the Snack Shack, where I know we had a big debate that the intent was only have cold sandwiches and soda, rather than hot dogs and hamburgers. And so, that word was so, that's why I cut that out, but I did want to get the, what we promised, that should take, go forward. But I did disagree on the other part, for the reasons I stated.
I'm not trying to play tennis with, with you here, but there have been other instances where we, well, like the East Harwich thing, there was a printed explanation in the warrant, but John Giorgio would say that that explanation doesn't go to the article itself, but the article, the explanation ended with, "This will complete." The Phase 2 of the CWMP, we've also made promises in the past where, "Don't worry, we're going to come back." I mean, that's not the intent, that's an explicit promise.
That's why I changed the word, was to put the verbal assurance in there, but I shied away from the intent, as being too nebulous to have, to be practical, quite frankly. But if you want to, you understand my point?
I, I do, but I'm, I'm trying to default towards the form of government we have, which is a town meeting legislative form. If they say something, and it's actually part of the legislative narrative, they really should be, if it's promised, it should be delivered.
I fully agree with that. So only the concept of intent got me, I couldn't, give me a problem. Any other comments going through this? Michael?
Just under goal two, the financial.
Yeah.
Thank you for adding objective A, I believe it's objective A, 2%. Oh, sorry. Thank you for adding goal, the financial, adding the 2%.
Right.
I would be much happier if that was a level budget, because you go on in objective B to stay within the limits of 2 and 1/2.
Right.
So the difference between 2 and 2 and 1/2, listening to town meeting, I think we should be looking at level as one budget, and then whatever Chris can come up with outside of that level budget. But thank you for putting all the work into it. Tremendous amount of work, there's, if I'm reading it right, between the goals and the objectives, which is how we used to lay out the goals and objectives for the town administrator, we have more goals and objectives than he does this year.
Well, and what I tried to do is be sure that our goals and objectives were in line with town charter, that we're directing the town administrator to move forward. Interesting comment on the budget, what I tried to do, and I, and I talked to Carol and Chris a little bit, was to separate out, on A, operating budget from debt service, because they're kind of two different items that we should be keeping track of. And the debt service is what we talk about when we talk about lower county roads, for instance, going forward, versus operating budget. I'm not sure I got that language as well as it could be to get those two concepts. And so, if you approve this, and then come back to me on, you know, with some, that we can adjust, some minor adjustments like that, I'd be all for it. Ed?
Yeah, I guess the use of the term "level" is tricky. Do you mean level from a financial standpoint, or do you mean it from a service standpoint? And you've come up with two completely different...
I, I don't know, I can only speak for myself. I tend to look at it from a financial standpoint.
Yeah.
It's a different discussion, you're right.
Yeah.
Michael?
Just so there's no gray area, financial, and as far as I'm concerned, level service. We're not going to get a lot of free services, so I think level on both sides.
Okay, anything else? But if someone else can help clarify that, I'd be all for it. But that's what I was trying to do.
You want to bring this back then, as a, for, for a vote?
I can bring this back for a vote, or we can vote tonight and give me some, make some minor adjustments, whichever we'd like. We, I'd like to move us, this is our schedule, to get this done tonight, because it wraps into our budget. So I'd like to go ahead with this, unless there's a strong objection.
I'd love that we approve this as the goals for the coming year.
Second? Same more discussion? Michael?
Still a little confused with voting something we know we're going to change.
Well, could you, this, that's a good question. Is the only question right now, objective A? Is there, to change that language, to clarify that?
For me, that's a big deal.
I would...
Objective A of which one?
Of goal two.
Of goal two.
Of the intent?
Yeah. No, not, no, not the intent. It was a financial, goal two is a financial one. In other words, level versus 2%.
I'm looking at the other one, too.
Okay, which other one?
Goal one, objective A.
Okay.
And it may, it may, I may be willing to accept other language, other than intent, so that it assuages you, but I'm really, really big on, you promised something at town meeting, you deliver it.
I think you are.
Well, it doesn't say that, though, Don.
It does.
I thought when you have in there verbal, that we, let me get up there. I thought that was in there already, Don.
The word directives bothers me, because it's a vote, it's not a directive. Board of Selectmen and town meeting votes, including, because the, again, John Giorgio has been very clear in his discussions, not just to this board, because I'm not criticizing this board, I'm just saying, historically, the boards have been given a scape, because he's made the decision that legally, the minimum barrier is that it's got to adhere to what the text of the warrant article was. But in the past, there's been some little loose explanations about what you're willing to do, whether you're going to come back for another vote for authorization.
My, my, my definition of directive is that comes from the town vote.
Then why don't we say votes?
Meeting town votes?
Yeah, town meeting votes.
If you want to make that change, I'd do that.
I'd be happy with that. That would fix the other problem, because the intent is the vote.
Okay. If, I'll go with that, if that's in the motion when we move forward. And then the only other one, I think, is the financial. I think the question is, do we think of having a level funded, is that, can we do? I don't want to have an objective that's impossible to do.
I think that's, if I may?
Sure.
I think that's one option. I think your other option is write in goal two, or B, it says, "Within the limits of Proposition 2 and 1/2 budget."
Okay, so that's, well, you're looking at that definite, that, that separates out operation from debt service.
Okay.
Does that work? I'll make that... Does that work? I'll make that change without understanding, is that, does that work with everyone?
What's the change?
What's the change?
Level funding and operating budget, and that's A, and B is to stay within 2.5. So that gives us some option of going up with debt service if needed. Because that's kind of what I was trying to do, is separate the concepts.
I'm okay with that, and in the end, it's a goal. We're gonna debate this when it comes before us.
Okay, Don?
Yeah, I'm okay with it, too, and I just wanted to flesh that out. The reason that Michael's saying that, I believe, is because regardless, from our perspective, what it looks like, level funded for operating and doing whatever we do for debt exclusions, we've had a trajectory for our borrowings, which has created quite an increase in people's actual tax bills. And they pay, they don't delineate whether they're paying a capital tax bill or an operating tax bill, it's just a bill. And because that's been going up much more than 2.5% because of the borrowings and the sequencing of things we're doing, it's kind of important to come right out and say that you're gonna do something to hold the line.
Well, and that was the point of this. Again, my point was to try to separate operation from debt service, because it's too different. To get to your point, it still ends up the same place, but from our, what we're trying to achieve is, we discuss them separately.
I'm good with it that way.
Ed?
Well, when I hear a financial level budget, that means we had, we spent on the operating budget 55 million this year, and that's what we're gonna spend next year. I don't see how you do that.
Yeah, Don?
That's not true. There are other sources other than tax. Prop 2.5 only talks about going up for the limits of levying taxes. We get money from fees, we get money from other sources.
But that's revenue. We're talking about expenses here.
Talking about expenses. Michael?
If you're gonna, if you're gonna hold the line on expenses.
The answer, if I may, you call me. The answer to your question, Ed, is yes.
Okay, so.
That's my opinion, yes. Town meeting last year, we got the budget passed by about 25 votes, they spoke. So I want to hold it as level as we can hold it.
I think in the jargon of the day, we might call that a stretch goal.
Just, Mr. Chairman, just make one suggestion. On objective B, it says, develop a budget which avoids the use of capital exclusions. Really what B is addressing is the debt budget.
Right.
And why not just call it the debt budget? Because the debt budget is what drives a lot of the expenses.
Okay. Is that okay?
Debt portion of the budget.
Okay, so, reiterating this then, what, if we're in agreement, I'll change directed to town vote, Don, for that one.
Okay.
And I'll change the financial to, A to level funding, and B to the debt budget within 2.5. Okay? If.
Again, there's no, there's no goal police. Ultimately, if we find ourselves needing to do something and we discuss it publicly, it is what it is, but this is kind of a good faith objective.
This, I tried to do two things. I tried to do that. I tried to address issues that we've had, basically this past year, of putting the stronger goals in there, about how we communicate, how we operate, and so. But in any case, is there, does anyone care to make a motion with those?
Motion and a second is there, and they agreed to their changes.
They have a motion and a second. Ed made a motion, Steve seconded. Are they agreeing to the changes or not? Changes, though, I, I guess I see if those changes.
Okay.
One more comment?
One more what? Sure.
One comment. Instead of ending on a contentious note, Larry, you put a lot of work into this. We appreciate it. The town should appreciate it, too.
So, so goal one, objective A. So, what we're.
Directives is out, votes is in.
Okay.
Town meeting votes.
I'll just change that directive, because, I mean, I assume directive is town meeting vote, but if it's, if that's more specific.
Measurable and accountable, goals and objectives with the TA, to achieve Board of Selectmen and town meeting votes.
Vote, I'll change that language till it makes sense.
Yeah, including printed warrant explanations.
Based on town meeting votes.
And verbal assurances made during debate. Whose verbal assurances? And are those verbal assurances going to be made part of?
Let's not beat around the bush. There've been people who were selectmen who have told the public certain things to get votes at town meeting, and they've turned their back on what they said. And our legal counsel has told us, well, that's fine, the town, the warrant doesn't, the actual article vote only counts, and it covers the text of the warrant article itself. I'm saying if we get a vote, a positive vote, because we promised people something, that should be part of the vote.
Okay.
And that's a matter of record. It's not just, well, who knows what was said. It was recorded. Or, in the case of some of these warrant articles, the explanation's printed in the warrant. It says that right there.
We've also had cases where we've had disagreements between selectmen on what the assurances are. So if we're going to.
So we throw away the baby with the bathwater?
Well, no, but if we're gonna make assurances and make them binding, they need to be made as part of the motion.
Part of the motion.
You know?
We're gonna be amending it with a lot of motions.
I mean.
I.
Promise made is promise kept.
I think this is, it's not concrete, but it's directive, and I read that since it's, since it's the board goals, it's the board assurances. I, yeah, I raise a point.
And if it's, and if it's the board assurances, that's fine. If all five of us stand up and give that assurance, that's fine. But if just one of us gets up and nobody disputes it, how do we know that that assurance that that individual selectman stood up and gave represents what the board's intent was?
Well, I could clarify that by putting, by adding the word, the board, repeat the board's assurances in here with that final statement.
I think we should.
Yeah, and I'll do that. Okay?
Okay.
That will clarify that, but board assurances.
Sure gonna like the debate.
You'll assure us of that anyway, so don't worry.
Okay, anyone else? Any more discussion? If not, thank you very much, and I'll make those changes.
Need to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, thank you.
Enamish.
Next on is B, is to vote intermissive agreement, the Orleans Day Center Program. And Chris, I sent you an email because there's some, it looked like we missed some deadlines here, so I.
On the annual meetings, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, no, excuse me, I'm way down in contracts, sorry.
You skipped a few.
Annual meetings, I skipped, I was gonna skip everyone here. And I got bikeways right there, so I'm gonna be in big trouble.
I was gonna say.
We'll go with bikeways first? Good evening.
Before they start, I want to thank the Bikeways Committee for setting up a booth and meeting the public at the Cranberry Festival. You guys did a great job.
You're welcome. We received many, many positive comments on both the Old Colony Rail Trail and the Cape Cod Rail Trail. A lot of visitors were saying, what a great trail system we have here on the Cape. Where they come from, Pennsylvania, Florida, New York, their trail system isn't as nice as ours. Anyway, I'm Fran Zaluski. I'm the chairman of the Harwich Bikeways Committee. I'd like to take a moment and thank the members of the committee for their participation on the committee. The mission of the Harwich Bikeways Committee is to work with the Harwich DPW and volunteers to develop, maintain, and improve the Old Colony Rail Trail, the Cape Cod Rail Trail, and other bike resources in Harwich. Our sincere thanks to Link Hooper and his staff for their ongoing and continued responsiveness to the committee's concerns. Our committee currently has five members, and we have two vacancies. Some of the activities and accomplishments of the past year, we initiated and installed a crossing light at the Pleasant Lake Avenue General Store. We have approval from the town meeting in May for another crossing light at Depot Street in North Harwich. We perform continuous monitoring of the trail for safety conditions and a special, particular attention to the trail for overwashes of sand, soil, and resulting from weather conditions. Link and his crew were instrumental in clearing the trail right after the tornado, made a lot of people happy. Replaced rotted benches at the Harwich Rotary. Jointly with the Chatham Bikeways Committee, we developed and distributed a new map and logo for the Old Colony Rail Trail. To help us improve the best practices for the OCRT, we participate in meetings with Mass Bike, the Cape Cod Commission, Traffic Safety Committee, the Highway Department, and our counterparts in neighboring towns such as Chatham, Orleans, and Brewster. Some of our future plans and objectives, our main and never-ending goals and plans are threefold. Maintenance of the Old Colony Rail Trail, improving bike safety, enhancing the bike environment, and continuing with a CPC application for crossing lights, warning beacons for Depot Road South is being submitted for consideration in 2020. That's my report.
Thank you. Nice short report, and I agree with others. It's a great, it's a great, it's great bike trails. I enjoy them a lot.
Thank you.
As long as you keep, as long as you get Link to keep the roots away from the surface, they're better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to rebut that.
Link Hooper, DPW Director. Just a real quick story. After the hurricane, I was out on reconnaissance with the town administrator, and we went to look at the cemetery. He said, take us, let's take a spin down the rail trail, and it was in shambles. And he urged me, or directed me, to clean up the rail trail. And I said, well, chief, we're picking up the roads, we've been on 12, 14-hour days. And he said, well, if you can squeeze it any way you can. We did just that. The next day, Saturday, we went and cleaned the rail trail up, our portion of it, and ironically, Fran shared a complaint with me of a resident that was here a month ago, must have been right after the tornado came through, and his displeasure of the condition of the rail trail that we then picked up five days, I believe, after the tornado came through. Thank you.
Well, it appears that, I don't have data on this, but appears that trail, there's more bikes going out every year. Move next to the Voter Information Committee.
How are you? Chris Joyce, Voter Information Committee. With me tonight is Peg Rose. Also on the committee, Emily Mylin and Pam Grosswald. In your packet is our report, and I don't intend to repeat all of that to you. It covers January basically through town meeting. We took July and August off, and we'll meet this month. And our reorganization of the committee is on the posted agenda. Just two things I think I'd like to mention is that our future plans include developing additional programs with Brooks Free Library, Ginny. On the workings of the town, we had our first, our first test, let's say, with Muni Finance 101 with Carol Coppola, Coppola, sorry, and directed to voters and residents. And we hear that there's some interest also from the department head, so that sounds pretty good. That's pretty much it, except that this is a repetition from last, last year. We're a short one member, and I'm hoping that in addition to our recruiting efforts, the interview committee might ID applicants that might be interested in another committee, that one's filled, and you'd consider us. I think the other thing I just mentioned is National Voter Registration Day is September 24th. So I think some of our own committee may be helping with the League of Women Voters here on Cape Cod to register folks. So questions you might have?
And where will that registration be?
Well, I'm not sure where they're going to be. I think I'm about to sign up for probably Brewster. I don't know if there's one in Harwich organized. Yep.
Thank you, Chris.
Yep.
Questions or comments for Chris?
Just thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Great job.
Good, thanks. Yep.
Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
Traffic Safety Committee?
Good evening, Gerald Beltas, I'm Chair. The membership we have consists of seven people. We're short one member. We have a member from the Police Department, Link from the Highway Department, Griffin Rider, myself, Linda Cibula, and Jerry Skelh. Attendance's been great. We had one phone in from a member who's away for the season during the wintertime, so that was it. Everybody's been sworn in. Everyone's taken the ethics exam, and the postings are there. Minutes are up to date. We've worked on a crosswalk policy that has now been accepted by you and the town. We're working on the traffic calming speed bump policy. We have a meeting on Wednesday, and we've got a rough draft we're gonna be voting on. Other things that have happened is with Link's work and our listening to the citizens' concerns is miles in Pleasant and South Street intersection is being improved. And we're working still on Route 39 and Chatham Road, the way the road comes out at an angle, and I've spoken with Griffin Rider about getting some drawings and working on that. Other than that, everything else is great.
Okay. Thank you. I think, I, well, I get calls on more than any are people wanting more crosswalks in various places, but but that, what did Hibis have? Is that state law or?
Crosswalks, there's, I think we did a rough Google map, and there's roughly 400 in town, or about 200, rather. And out of those is, a lot of them belong to the state that are on Route 28, and then a lot of them are in town. And probably half of those are ADA compliant. So before we start building more crosswalks, I'd like to see that we address the ones that aren't ADA compliant, because it's, I think, probably $6,000 each crosswalk to bring it up to ADA compliance. Is that roughly right, Link? So if somebody wanted a crosswalk in a neighborhood, you'd have to put a curb cut in, the ramp, the braille pad. It's not a snap of the fingers, go down there and drop some paint on the road and make some hash marks in it. It's more involved.
Yeah. So are you, is your committee prioritizing then the?
No, we haven't been asked, and we don't know where to start. I mean, it's, Harwich Center has some here, and there's some that are other places that need to be addressed. The bikeways, the bikeways, they have all of theirs, crosswalks on all the roads. They're all, as far as I know, done by the state and Link, right? Yeah.
That'd be one, be one to look at from ADA compliance as a start.
It's not the bikeways?
Yeah, no, the crosswalks.
Yeah.
Be sure they're ADA compliant. Might be a start to look at some of those.
We're working on an inventory, and it's not fun to do it in the summertime in too much traffic, so we're gonna be hitting it later this fall.
Yeah, good.
Find out where they are, and then which ones are and are not, and then whose responsibility is it.
Don, then.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jerry, I'm not even sure how you would approach this, but I do know, I've seen more and more of it. The proliferation of mopeds or smaller scooters which aren't licensed, it doesn't, it's hard enough when they're on secondary roads, Queen Anne Road or whatever, but we have some county roads, like the route structure. county roads, like the route structure, Route 124, Route 137, Route 39, they can't even do 40, never mind 45. And you wind up with the phenomenon that you occasionally get with street sweepers, where there's like dozens of cars behind you waiting for, because the person meanders. They don't have the profile that a bicycle does. I'm not sure if you've ever looked into, you know, the safety hazard that they present, but it's, it's getting worse because that seems to be the vehicle of choice in the summertime for summer workers.
That, and I've also thought about the electric scooters that are being rented in different cities. I mean, we don't have them here yet, and the electric bicycles, I don't know who's going to regulate them, and if it'll ever come to town. It, it seems like the Police Department needs to ask the question, see how we can regulate it together.
Well, the reason I ask the question is because those, those would be disallowed on Route 6, even though Route 6 is only five miles an hour different from Route 39, and they're both state routes.
I hadn't thought about how to regulate that at all.
Okay. Any other comments, questions for Jerry? Thank you. Keep up the good work.
Thanks, Jerry.
Next on the agenda is a request to waive the room rental fee of $200 for the Harwich Elementary School. This is event for November 1 of this year at the Harwich Cultural Center. Motion?
Chairman Ballantyne, I move that we waive the room rental fee of $200 for the Harwich Elementary School's use of room at the Harwich Cultural Center on the 19th, or the 1st of November, 2019.
2019.
Second. Second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Next on the agenda is a request for purchase of a sub grinder. Link, thanks for your information.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. After the tornado, the DPW conducted a survey of the stumps, which you may have seen marked around town, so we could determine the size and the scope of the situation that we had to contend with. We have just started, last week, starting to pull more of the more egregious stumps that are affecting the roadway and so forth. We took one out behind Town Hall here the other day. And we plan to get on stump removal, for the removals, not the grinding, starting probably next week, having a crew on that full-time, do what we can. Once we did a complete inventory of the town and considered some other properties that were negatively infected, the golf course cited that they had 400 stumps down in there. The cemetery administrator cited that they had 300 stumps. We ended up with 1,000 stumps. And then we said, "Okay, out of the thousand, how many going to be pulled? How many are going to be ground down?" And by grinding a stump, what we're talking about is your stump sticking up, you come in with a piece of equipment that chews it up into basically sawdust or chips, and then you just put some lom over it, and you basically hid the problem. We have a small stump grinder that goes on the front of a skid steer. That has served us, we probably have it a decade or so, and it serves us fairly well for doing a few dozen here, a few dozen there. It is not a commercial-grade stump grinder, and in fact, our Vehicle Maintenance Department ends up fixing it a great deal, just using it for a couple dozen. It's not a commercial-grade unit that you would tackle hundreds, let alone, I think, 750 that I estimated town-wide that needs to be addressed. So given those circumstances, it's becoming evident that we need another, another piece of equipment if we, if we choose to do this within-house labor. My staff did some research. They talked to other tree companies, some of which that we had hired after the storm, after the tornadoes to help us clean up. These guys are in the business, they, they, they do it. What they recommended was a Vermeer, I forget the actual number, you have it in front of you, that was the smallest stump grinder that was, we'd consider a commercial grade, meaning a direct drive. You don't have belts, you don't have failure points that you have with a lot of the other ones. And the price on that was fifty, fifty-seven, $5,750, and it's available on state contract. In round, in round numbers, I, I gave an email to the administrator stating that, and then he came back and said, "Well, what's the, your labor cost, or your sunk cost in that?" In round numbers, I calculated it would take us about 50 days, put one guy on it, for about $15,000 in labor, and probably $5,000 in consumables, meaning fuel and teeth and anything else that, that may go wrong. I also got a quote of $210 per stump, which would bring us to approximately $150,000 if you choose to outsource this, if we choose to go to bid with this, and that was from Mayor Tree Service. I provided you all the documentation of the quote from Mayor, as well as the specifications on the stump grinder itself. I apologize, that was not in your packet. I sent this, sent the stuff along, and I handed it out to you this evening. I have a Vehicle Maintenance Manager, Kyle Edson, here. If you have any specific questions about the piece of equipment that I'm proposing. I'm proposing, or I sought the administrator's opinion if we could purchase this utilizing storm, storm funds. I'm not saying that the DPW, I have no mechanism to, to, to purchase this, to fund the purchase of this. We're saving, I think, about $70,000 if we purchase it and do it in-house over outsourcing, outsourcing this. The ones in the right-of-way are my immediate concerns, but I do think the golf course has a ton of damage. If you haven't been up there, you should see all the trees that were cut down. We've got the hollow right down the street here, and Island Pond Cemetery needs a lot. And in Island Pond, they just about all need to be ground, and not, you know, you can't affect graves and so forth, pulling stumps. When you pu, and just, when you pull a stump, we can't just go pull it, we have to dig-safe it, meaning that you have utilities, you might have a gas line, a Verizon line over here on Bank Street, just past Lover's Lane. We actually, those two big stumps that were turned over, had a Verizon trunk line this big running through the stump. So you can't just go and pull these things, it could end up causing problems. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, Link, first of all, thanks for including your in-house labor, because that's always your question, mine, if knowing what the total cost will be. I guess we, you turned the question into Chris then about funding for this. Do we have available funds?
Mr. Chairman, it would be my recommendation that we include this in the, the storm funds, the storm funds, the tornado funds, we have the authorization to do some deficit spending. It's about 100, I'm sorry, about $1.4 million is what we have spent to date, at least in my discussions with the, the state representative. She had indicated that the town had put in under FEMA that we knew that it would be about closer to $3 million, that if we wanted to try to transplant trees and do the stump grinding work, that it would be a lot more money. So I believe that what she had kind of indicated to me is that they may target like $2 million in reimbursement with the idea that we would be able to buy equipment like this to do that work, and then also to plant additional trees. So I think submitting that material to her, that, you know, immediate storm damage is one thing, long-term, long-term storm recovery is something else. So my sense is that they're going to try to give us some additional money. If not, you know, it's 57.5, and having that piece of equipment to be able to help out from the storm, just to me, makes a lot of sense, and then it would be an ongoing asset for the town.
Link, in terms of the immediacy of doing this, the timing of doing it, if we delayed it some to see if we actually got money through spatial legislation, what, what would that do to you? You know, in other words, if we delayed a month to two months to see what happened?
We, we're going to take care of the ones that present the most hazards first, so the ones in the right-of-way. The vast majority of these, I don't think are any, under any immediate need to be addressed, like the ones up on the golf course. They can still play golf.
So we can make this decision in a, a month or two?
We could hold off and see if a supplemental budget is approved.
Okay. Steve?
That was my question, Larry. Do we have any sense of, to Chris, of when we might know the kind of reimbursement we might get?
I mean, the sense is, when the state does a supplemental budget is when they would do it. They wouldn't just do it for the small towns here.
What's the time?
Sarah had kind of indicated that probably in the month of October or November, they would plan on having a supplemental budget for the town, for the state overall.
Michael, and then Don.
I guess just if this comes back, Link, or when this comes back. You mentioned the amount of stumps. I called a few tree companies today just to get a little bit of information. All three tree companies said 75 to 250 per stump. So there was, there was a range, and the 250 was a fairly large stump with the, in the way they explained it, they get into the roots on the outside of it. So 75 to 250. And then I called a few rental companies that rent machines similar to what you're talking about, and it's anywhere between 250 and 450 a day to rent one. On the low end, it was 200 at True Value in Dennis. That's the quote I got, so. So I just wonder if it makes sense to buy another piece of equipment for these one storms. And I guess my final thought would be, since you mentioned cemetery and golf, golf has a maintenance and improvement fund that the golfers pay for to improve the golf course, and they do tree work every year with that fund. And I believe it's in the, in the neighborhood of $45,000 to $50,000 we vote every year.
That would be appropriate.
And there's always money in that account after that. Cemetery would have perpetual care, and because these are human cemeteries, I believe the perpetual care funds could be used. So have they offered to throw any money in on this, or have you guys explored that?
Thank you. Bunch of questions. No, I have not asked them. I asked, I asked both the golf director and cemetery director how many stumps they had, because we quite frankly hadn't been out there. That's the only information I asked from them. I will say, my initial estimate to the administrator was about $150 per stump. That's what I had remembered the last time we engaged somebody to do something like that. And I got the written quote from Mayor Tree Service, which is a big player, and they came down and helped us. And I think they got one from Northern, a verbal, from Northern Tree Service, but I didn't have that in writing. I only had the mayor one. Be, be happy to do some more research on, on that. As far as stump grinders that's available at True Value, I don't believe they have anything that's, that's anywhere near what we're talking about here. We have one that goes on the front of our skid steer that's probably equivalent to what you would rent down at True Value. It's just not capable of doing the, the work that we're talking about here. This is hundreds of stumps. I'm talking about probably 50 days' worth of work to using that thing day in and day out.
Michael?
I guess just to follow up, the $200 day was the True Value one. I didn't say it was that size. The more expensive one was that size. And then I wonder how many stumps we actually have to grind? Are we talking about going into the middle of the woods of the golf course and grinding stumps, or doing the ones that are in the hollow rather than cutting them flush? How many do we actually have to cut that would be a public safety hazard?
The only ones I can speak articulately is the survey I did of the 120 that's in the towns right of way.
Thank you.
The others were simply estimates I got from those two people.
Thank you, Link.
Don?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is me caring about the process as much as, it's kind of like, you have a destination picked out for your vacation, but how you get there is, is the problem. We can all agree that destination is commendable. So with this, I tend to believe that, yeah, it's a, it would be a good idea, but I've got two problems. First of all, even in the near term, I'd like to hear from the Finance Director. I did talk to her today, and she hasn't identified the actual source yet, and it's no, no different than any other thing that we buy. I'd like to be able to confirm that there's, there's a real source of money. But the other thing that really troubles me is to the extent that there's not an absolute emergency for the moment, why would be willing to just ignore the capital process entirely and say, "We need it now," when we're being put in a position of having to do the Capital Outlet Committee's work and do assessing? All I'd really like to see is a recommendation from some people, and, and if we don't have an emergency to get it this second, I'd love to see the process that's in the charter followed, where we're talking the capital plan, and the people at town meetings say, "Yeah, great idea," and we vote on it. This short-circuits that significantly, and I'm not sure how I feel about that when it comes back.
Well, I think what we are now is, it's a good recommendation. I think we want to wait at least a couple of months to see what happens with the spatial funding, or you're going to do some more research?
I, I will get some more information. The urgency to me was only driven by what I viewed as a possible opportunity. If we were saying we were taking care of all the stumps and we were to bid this, rest assured, it's going to be a buck and a half, or, or something more. You could say, "Just leave everything in the hollow, leave it to golf course, just let them, let them rot." I, I don't necessarily think that's the right thing to do either. And I presented this to the administrator thinking that there might be an opportunity to have a win-win. And then we'd have this piece of equipment that, that does not get used all that often, but it's something that, when you need it, you, you need it. I mean, I-
Just to clarify, Link, it's a win-win because you're hoping we'll get, we'll get money from the state through the storm fund?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
And so, to come back around there, if we wait a couple of months till October, you're saying, we can still take that win-win situation and build that into the storm fund if that happens?
We, we've got probably a month's worth of removals to do before we actually need to get on this. I mean, if miraculously this thing showed up tomorrow, and it is available on state contract, but there's still procurement that needs to be done, purchasing anything on state contract.
So you're, you're okay with that, then?
Oh, yes, sir. I, I was just thinking that there was an opportunity for discussion, and to let the board know the magnitude of the problem.
Steve and then Michael.
I, I just, I, I like Michael's thought about a shared expense here. Let, let's take, we should take a look at that. I mean, that's, it's worth, you know, if, if we can get some contribution from the, from the golf course, why not? I mean, if, if there's a huge component of this that is the golf course, you know, it makes sense to take a look at where we could find other sources of funds.
Michael?
Thank you, Stephen. And I was going to say exactly that again, if we could please look into cemetery and golf, but we also share golf equipment with other towns. Has anyone approached any of the other towns affected by this to see if they'd want to split this piece of equipment with us?
I have not.
I would explore everything.
I have not, but that's not a bad idea. You may be aware or unaware that immediately following the tornado, our neighboring towns that were not immediately affected, like Brewster, Sandwich, Falmouth, Plymouth-
Marshfield?
Yeah, that was, they came under, under MEMA help. But our neighbors, my phone rang, and can we send anybody? And they did just that. No questions asked. They sent crews with the right equipment, the right implements, and they really helped, they, they really helped out a great deal. And if, if this was a situation where we had something like this, you know, we could certainly reciprocate it to other communities.
Okay. This, and this is, anything else? Let's leave it in your hands, Link, to come back to us in a, say, a month or so?
What I thought I heard was come back once you have a decision on the funding.
Exactly.
And, and for me to-
And, and the exploring these other ideas that everyone's come up with.
And to see if the golf and the cemetery would be on board of contributing to.
Fantastic. Ed?
Well, yeah, you know, certainly if we're going to have to fund it ourselves as a town looking at golf and, and the cemetery, funding sources would be important, but if we're fortunate enough to have a supplemental budget from the state that would provide for it, I think that's the funding source we're most hopeful of. And, you know, for the towns that helped us out, it may be a piece of equipment that we loan them at no charge, but other towns that are looking for it, I know, I know we do, we've done that with the ground penetrating radar, renting it out to other towns, because we funded that entirely ourselves, so.
Okay. Thank you, Link.
All right, thank you.
Move on. Okay, I tried to jump before, but now we're into contracts, and- And I wish to delay the A on the award of Phase Two contracts who were on Phase Two. I've asked Chris, to our town administrator, to put together some, some information about various questions we have concerning Phase Two. And I wanted to present that and have that discussion before we move on to the, this contract bid. So we'll schedule that for next week, and we'll come back with those two items. D, B is vote to approve the fiscal year two thousand, actually twenty, intermunicipal agreement. Chris, can you speak to this? Because there seems to be some, some delay in getting the paperwork from, what was sent and when it shows up in our, in our packet.
Sure. Just in terms of, I, I did not get a chance to go through to see when, in fact, they sent through to us. But the reason why this is in front of the board is because it is-
Excuse me, I actually can help you with that, Chris, because that's the paperwork was July fifteenth.
July fifteenth.
They sent it into, into the town here. And the reason I say, excuse me, just one more, the reason that concerns me is, is that the contract is, library is going from July one to June, of this year to June thirtieth of next year. So we're already a bit behind signing it.
Yeah, it's not totally unusual, Mr. Chairman, when you have an intermunicipal agreement that, I think this is the third or fourth year of it, that that town sent it out a little bit later. So if we get along July fifteenth, my apologies, because it did, did definitely sit in the office for a little bit. So I apologize in, in terms of that. I, I think that the town, if the town did not vote, if town meeting did not vote the funding for this, then we would have informed the other town that we were not going to be able to meet our commitments under this contract. Just what the contract does, or the intermunicipal agreement, is that they have adult daycare program that they operate over in Orleans. And we do have occasion where we send residents of Harwich over there. They do not recover, full cost recovery for the, the services that Orleans provides. So it's probably been at least four or five years, at least four years, I think, that they asked us to meet that differential. So if they sent it over a little bit late prior to the fiscal year, I mean, it would obviously operationally be better to have it before so we can line it up. But it's not that unusual to have it come in afterwards.
Okay, Don?
I think we're missing the point of the question. Michael asked last week when this came in, and it was just recently. Recently isn't July. That's just my comment.
Okay. Anybody else, Michael or Steve or?
My comment is the same as Don's. And quite, quite frankly, it goes pretty, it goes a lot deeper than this. How am I supposed to trust eight-million-dollar wastewater contracts? And how are we supposed to trust the town administrator when I ask a direct question with an answer in front of me? And I apologize to do this in a public meeting, but that's the mechanism, they have to do it. Your quote was, "We just got it." I asked the question because I knew the answer, Chris. And you didn't answer us honestly. And the only apology you're going to make now is because it took so long to sign the contract? And I did a public records request from Orleans to find out when we got it as well, and to find out how many different times they reminded us. When are we going to get factual, on-time information, and honest answers from you? That's my question. And I think the boards do an apology for last week's answer, "We just got it."
I've apologized already, Mr. Chairman. A lot of material goes through the office, do the best we can.
Okay. Well, we have that left. Well, this, this move on, do I have a motion to, to approve this contract?
So moved.
Second? Any more discussion? All in favor? Next is the vote to approve Fire Station Number Two Procurement Furniture and Related Materials of Little bit more than twenty-sixth.
I'm going to have Joe cover this.
Joe? And I just commented this is within the town warrant article for this building, so it's not-
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Excuse me. You just draw your attention to the memorandum I had prepared. This is based on the extensive work done by Lieutenant Tilzley. This is the, really the last big thing except for the network peripherals on Fire Station Two. It's actually the furniture and furnishings. It's been quite an ordeal, to put it mildly. I want to personally thank Lieutenant Tilzley for his patience, his perseverance, and very glad to have this in front of the board. As you can see in the memorandum there, it was all done in accordance with all procurement requirements. The contract language that you see before you was not vetted by council because it was offered by council in advance. The only thing I wasn't able to do last week was get it in front of the town accountant, but she did confirm that the funding is related back to the two thousand and eighteen Fire Station Two vote. So we would recommend that the board approve the procurement and to sign the contract documents.
Any comments? Entertaining motion, Michael?
Just comment, where's the contract?
I apologize, I thought that was included in the materials. Michael?
I guess that's my point. You know, in the past, we have the contract, we also have the, and I appreciate the checklist, and actually, I'd also like to thank Lieutenant-
In the summary.
I'd like to thank Lieutenant Tilzley as well. He goes way above and beyond, and by no means do I see this as his fault. But we're being asked to vote on a contract, again, that we don't have in the packet.
We can bring it back with the contract next week. It's not, I don't think this is holding anything up.
Will this affect opening the station?
Pardon?
Will this affect opening the station?
Can you, Scott, do you want to comment on that?
Scott Tilzley, Arch Fire Department. We're, we're hoping early November. The problem, of course, with a lot of this furniture is there's a lot of lead time. We're already a little bit behind the ball. The, the process is kind of complex, and I'm actually fortunate that we got delayed a little bit because we might still get furniture by the time we try to move in.
You may want to move ahead then and bring the, give us a copy of the contract.
Sure, I would appreciate that.
What's the sense of the? I don't want to hold it up, Michael, just get your point.
So if I could, Scott? Did you receive a contract from?
Yes, we do. I got the electronic copy signed by W. Mason. I just did not receive the inked version for you all to sign. So I, I did get, they, they accepted the KPLA contract. They did sign it and send it back electronically. It just, it wasn't in time to get into the packet.
Okay.
So we can't sign it anyway until next week, is what you're saying?
There's no mechanism.
I guess that's true.
But all of these items were on the state bid list originally, or?
Well, my understanding, by working with procurement, is that the state bid list is a little bit of a misnomer now when you get to a certain point. So I had to put specs together and actually send out new specs to companies that were on the state contract, and they rebid it. So it was, it was bid out, but they aren't specifically off of a state contract list, a bid list. It's a wild new world, sir.
Chris? The state contract does require that we do additional bidding. So it used to be in the old system that you could just use that bid as a, as a process. Now they require additional bidding after the state contract has been issued.
Well, I was going to say that we, we researched it, and there was difficulty finding a vendor that had everything. So the, the method that Lieutenant just mentioned is what we opted for. We did get the quotes, it is in conformance with the requirements.
Uh, Michael?
I just want to reiterate, Scott, that I have no problem with the way that the procurement was done on this. Being asked to put my name on a contract, we often are, but I don't have the contract to read. So for me, I have to wait until next week.
Thank you.
Well, it turns out to be non-issue since we don't have it anyway to sign. So we'll bring it back next week, Chris, and Scott, and then we'll sign it.
And approve it.
And approve it. I think we should do both, huh?
I think so.
Okay, next on the agenda item is Brooks Library pump drives.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, on these next three items, I, I will apologize and tell you that I was unable to provide my cover memo because of a family emergency that kept me out of the office for the bulk of the midweek and end of the week last week. However, what I would have done with my memo is refer you back to the memorandum you see in the packet, the work that Sean Libby has done on this. First, this is not a thirty-B procurement as we just did. It is exempt. It falls under Mass General Laws, Chapter Twenty-five A, Section fourteen. You can see in Sean's narrative that there's, and that's because of the grant application to it and the grant funding that will be used to offset costs. So in each of these instances, these are all considered individually as measures. And that's why they're presented as three separate procurements, three separate contracts, if you will. It's, if it had been thirty-B, someone could suggest that there was bid splitting, but it is not a thirty-B, and it's twenty-five A for grants. We would recommend that you approve all three. And as I go through it, I'm praying to God that we have all the correct language in there. Yes, we do.
What's the total then of the three?
I apologize, I had that in my notes. It's, it was exceeding one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So when we, when Sean and I first had the conversation, we were looking at possibly having to do RFPs because it was over the one-fifty. But then Sean provided the information regarding Mass General Laws, Chapter Twenty-five A. So total cost is in excess of one-fifty, I believe. But because you can handle them as measures, that's why they're broken out in the manner that you see it on the agenda.
So this may be clear, we, we have a grant of one-hundred-and-fifty-three, and these add up to more than that. So how we, we funded the excess and?
We actually, the town, a couple of years ago, put together the facility maintenance into one pool of money. It's his intent to take it out of some of that.
So we have a line item to fund that, the excess.
The excess.
Total comes to one-sixty-six.
One-sixty-six. Thank you. There were short fourteen thousand, basically. Questions? Comments? Michael?
Sorry to be the contract police, but is the same contractor doing all three contracts?
In this instance, yes.
So if all three contracts are done by the same person, if I'm correct, the exemption under the energy upgrades is only good up to a hundred thousand dollars.
Per individual contract?
No, I think that the gray area there, Chris, is if you got one contractor doing all three, I, I guess I would just have to see. I don't believe what you're saying. So I guess I'd just have to see it in writing before I vote on it. Energy upgrades, from what I read, is a hundred thousand dollars is the cap, if it's the same contract. If it was different contractors, you're a hundred percent correct. And you may be, you may be right.
We went through that before, we can take it up with Sean.
It may not matter to the rest of the board, so I mean.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, that, that information was available to Griffin and I. Sean did present it, it was a memo from council. We had asked him a lot of the same questions, and, you know, you, you might hear some discussion later on tonight about procurement. It's, it's, it's why we do our due diligence. So when these came before us, we analyzed that based on council's opinion and the statutes. So we did feel comfortable that it was appropriate for this to come to this level to the board. We did vet those questions. I, I don't have council's opinion with me, but I can get it.
Okay. I'll retain a motion.
Chair? I'd move that we approve contract of purchase library pump motor drives in the amount of thirty-one thousand, five hundred and forty dollars, of five hundred dollars and forty cents with surprise engineering, I believe.
That's those three together?
Do I do the three together?
Well, they're being presented as individual contracts, so.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Or did, Don?
Just making a comment. I'm hearing what Michael's saying. I've never not voted to approve anything for the library, and very supportive. But I don't know why we couldn't wait a week to get all of the paperwork. Carol Coppola is, once again, not part of this. I would love to see, I'd love to see this because it's an audit trail. In three years, you know who it was who was recommending something and who it was, who voted on it. We keep skipping because everything becomes an exception. But when the exception is skipped, is what you're doing all the time, that's the norm. I would prefer to wait the week and get everything that we're supposed to have.
Okay, well, we have-
And if I'm being forced right now, then I'm going to have to vote no.
We don't actually have a second at the moment, I think, so.
You do.
We do.
Steve, okay. Well, all in favor? Oppose?
Aye.
Aye, I'm opposed on this one as well. A, a week won't hurt anything, I don't believe, at this end, so we'll get to paperwork.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, is it the intent of the board to reject the procurement or to table until next week?
To table until next week.
But we didn't need that vote. This just wasn't successful as a motion now, if you come back with it.
We'll come back next week with the, with the motion.
With the paperwork.
What is it that needs to be clarified here?
He thought that it was overtly rejected as a procurement.
I think we're looking for Joe to bring back the legal reading that we can do this with three separate contracts, even though we have the same vendor for each one.
And that it somehow fits under a hundred thousand dollar-
Right. Because if it, if they, if they combine it because it's the same vendor, then it's over a hundred thousand dollars.
We don't know that that's the real guideline or not.
Well, no, that's real guideline or not. That's the question.
I was asking whether we're rejecting it all, and we're not.
If I could clarify for Steve, my reading of it, Stephen, is anything over a hundred thousand is not exempt if it's the same contractor. Joe is saying he's in receipt of a letter from legal that says that they're okay to do it. We just don't have that. And then the second piece that I would ask for for clarification, since we're giving Joe a list, is I would like to get the memo from Joe, since we're going to have time, and I would like to get from Carol Coppola her signature on it, since there's money coming out of another line item, and we're over budget on it. So the three things that should be in the packet?
Mr. Chair, that's, that was his question, and we, my vote was not to reject the contracts and not award them.
We'll come back with that.
It was to come back with the proper documentation.
Ed?
Mr. Chair, I made the motion to approve it simply because you asked for a motion to be made, you know? And if you were going to not support that motion-
I should have done that.
You should have just said, "We'll carry this over until next week."
Good point.
It'll all be good next week.
Good point, my mistake. Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, we'll bring that back then. Next on the agenda is vote to nominate, nomination for District of Critical Plan Concern for the Route Twenty-eight West Harwich, from Dennisport Town Line to the Herring River. Michael?
I was going to make a motion, but if, if Charlene, Charlene's getting up to talk, I will interrupt.
Please don't yet, only because I need a couple of clarifications from the board. Just for the public's, from, stop sliding, information. I'm Charlene Green, Hauge Town Planner. Back on August twelfth, the board did ask, did refer nomination, discussion of a nomination of this corridor from the Dennisport Town Line to the Herring River to the Planning Board. On August twenty-seventh, Sarah Cordjeff from the Cape Cod Commission was present to give a presentation on what a DCPC is, what its benefits are, et cetera. We did not talk specifics of the corridor as a DCPC. However, as a town planner, I kept going. And at the meeting on September tenth, I did bring a draft document to the Planning Board for their consideration. Sarah Cordjeff, again, was at that meeting to answer any particular questions. We did hear from several residents who spoke favorably of the nomination. And after a lengthy discussion by the board of the board members present, five did vote in favor, one opposed, two recommend and send the DCPC nomination for the West Harwich Corridor to the Board to select one. Since the meeting with the Planning Board, I did have several conversations with Cape Cod Commission staff. And based on that, I did provide for each of you a handout, and I also have it on the board. And if I'm smart enough, I can do this. The original proposal was to have it be the routes, along Route six, excuse me, Route Twenty-eight in the West Harwich area, the depth of the CH-one zoning district. After many conversations with- After many conversations with commission staff, it was recommended, it's not showing well here, but you do have the handout, it was suggested and strongly recommended that we actually look at using the rear property lines for the properties that actually front on Route 28 as the district boundary line. A couple parcels that I want to bring up to you, so basically, it's properties running on Route 28, which are within the CH-1 zoning district from the Dennisport Town Line to the western shore of the Herring River. However, the portions of those properties located at 93 and 97 Route 28, and the property located at 156 Riverside Drive outside the current CH-1 zoning district would be exempt. 93 and 97 are the Habitat for Humanity property. Unfortunately, our parcel-based maps do not have that subdivision incorporated on the maps yet, so we didn't have those boundary lines to go by. And then the property at 156 Riverside Drive is a very oddly shaped lot. It actually has a very thin panhandle that goes to Route 28. So the panhandle portion of that would be within the DCPC area if it were nominated. However, the crux of the property at 156 Riverside would not be within those confines. And if you do look, there are a couple properties that would be outside of this that do fall in the CH-1 zoning district. For example, there's a property that fronts on Division Street. It is not historic home, based on the survey that we have available to us that was done a few years ago. And if you go to, I can do this, bing, on page 15 of 17 in your packet, there was recommended language change for item number nine, which had previously said, just very generic language, it said if you had a comprehensive permit, you were good and exempt. It was suggested that we change the language to any comprehensive permit issued pursuant to Chapter 40B of Massachusetts law prior to the nomination of this DCPC would be exempt. The other item, number eight, any development or redevelopment where all necessary permits have been issued before, that date is blank. That's a date which you all could set, you could set it as tonight if you choose to nominate this as a DCPC. The other thing I wanted to show you, because I've been working hard on this, this is the backup information for the nomination. It's almost 600 pages long. So a lot of work has gone into this. Whatever you choose to do, that's fine. If you choose not to, I'm going to have a nice burning party at my house, but, you know, this has been looked at pretty extensively by staff, and I did provide for you on the memo a recommended motion at the bottom of the memo. If you have any questions, I also do have on this the milestones for the nomination. One thing I do want to bring up is if the board does nominate this, and if I get this whole packet to them tomorrow, the moratorium, there's what's called a heavy moratorium and a light moratorium. The heavy moratorium, which would halt everything for about two weeks, would not go into effect until the date it is advertised in the newspaper. So that's about a three to four day lead time. They do advertise in the Cape Cod Times. If it is accepted as a nomination, once the, or, excuse me, once the advertisement has been done, then it goes to a light moratorium, which only covers those items which are specifically outlined in the application. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
Okay, questions, Don?
Yeah, this is a question before a motion here. You've got two things on the screen there. The first one, how does that dovetail with the recommended motion? Because ultimately, I think we need a first motion to implement what that date would be.
You're the board, you can move whatever you would like.
I'd like to motion that item eight's date be tonight, September 16th, 2019.
The second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And Michael wanted to make the motion.
No, you can make the motion. I can't find it.
So the motion itself is still substantially the same, even though the corridor is slightly different? All right. I move to approve and forward the DCPC nomination form for the Route 28 corridor in West Harwich from the Dennisport slash Harwich Town Line to the western edge of Herring River to the Cape Cod Commission for their consideration, and to have the town administrator prepare the necessary cover letter, and to have Charlene Greenhouse, Town Planner, serve as the primary contact.
Second.
Further discussion?
I guess just one, that property you spoke of on Division Street, that's to be exempt?
That would be exempt based on the new configuration lines.
Okay.
But it's still, the corridor is still the same from Dennisport Town Line to the western edge of the Herring River.
Okay. And the property on Riverside? The one you talked about with the little corner?
Would be exempt.
Exempt as well?
Yes, except for that skinny little panhandle that goes through 28.
Thank you.
Now, Don?
I want to thank you for all the work you and the planning board put into this, and also state pretty emphatically that I think people 50 and 100 years from now are going to be grateful for what you did.
Agreed. Great job. That usually doesn't happen, Paul, so accept it.
No, stop.
Charlie.
I haven't seen a standing ovation for a town employee for a while.
Okay, if no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
You guys can't leave yet, though. Okay. Chris, next item is the-
I'd like to ask that, you postpone, Mr. Chairman? We're still in the process of putting that material together on the-
This is for everyone, the agenda item was noise violations at Ember, submitted by the police chief, and as Chris, you said you want to postpone that to get-
Yes, please.
Okay. Move on to town administrative reports. Insurance liability.
There's just a few, there was a question raised in regards to the tornado with the insurance. I was able to find in the binder and did include in there for autos, I believe that the general liability has the same. I couldn't go through the policy to find that element, but it does say volunteers doing work on behalf of the town. So volunteers such as the church folks that came in, the Southern Baptists, would have fallen under that portion of our insurance liability.
I actually couldn't find that in the document you sent us. They had additional insured, and then it refers you to Page 1 of endorsements, which I didn't have.
Yeah, it's under the endorsement.
Or voluntary workers.
Okay. I just didn't get, didn't get that far.
It just said volunteers working on behalf of the town.
Okay, thank you. I missed it.
And then, we did receive dam safety inspection, a request to do that. I will forward that on to Griffin. I believe this one is any dam under 20 feet in length, if I think I remember that right. It's a town obligation to inspect versus the state usually does dam inspections. I'll take that back in terms of the 20 feet.
I asked Chris to include this for information. What involves a dam inspection?
We'll have to hire an engineer to actually look and go through the dam to make sure that it is not going to have-
The structural sound, is that?
...in failure, right.
Ed?
I know we took apart the dam.
Going to Coles Brook.
At Hoyt Road, we took that one apart.
What other dams do we have in town?
This one is the North Harwich Reservoir Dam, so I think when we acquired the property-
That's the one that's-
It's on the bike trail on the Hall property.
Hall property.
Yeah. And also, would it be the Flume?
On the other side of the-
At the Herring, the Herring Flume?
Yeah, that's another-
Would be considered one, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's a, my last town, I had, I think, five or six of them, so we did have to hire an outside firm to go through them.
Yeah, thank you.
And then lastly, the Cornelius Pond, I had Michael Lack from HCT came in and was going to put together, just more of a heads up, that he wanted to do on the Cornelius Pond Woodlands, Harwich Conservation Trust wants to do some kind of opening ceremony. So once he selects a date and gets a date, he'll pass it along, or sends us an invitation, he'll pass it along to board members. But it's a little area that he has roped off at the moment. They had some problems, the tornado had blocked some of the trail, so he wanted to have his people go in and clear the trail before they opened it up. And that concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Selectment report, Don?
Aye.
Ed?
Nope.
Now, Michael?
Aye.
Steve?
Just a thanks again to Ed for all the hard work on the cranberry festival.
And I again apologize for messing up that vote on the air-saving devices, but we'll bring that back.
No problem.
Just a comment on that, I don't think you have anything to apologize for. It's a five-member board, you can ask for a motion, you never know how people are going to vote, and I don't think we're supposed to be in sync.
So, we're good there.
Motion adjourned.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.